Good evening, and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the roll.
Heschel?
Yeah?
Selagi? Harlan?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Darnar?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olmstead?
Here.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Gunlock will be leading us this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Next, we move on to Board and Administrative Reports. There are a few things I'd like to share this evening. First of all, I've had the privilege since the first of March to represent the district at a variety of meetings, including Community Sounding Board, the Oshkosh Public Museum Board meeting, and the CISA VI Board of Control meeting, and two literacy meetings with CISA VI representatives, Jean Marie Syriaks and Kathy Schmidt. I've also attended the Equity Ally training offered by the district, which I highly recommend, and the Joint Review Board meeting, looking at a TIF district for the Miles Kimball site. There was also a CISA VI Legislative Meeting, a Chamber Zoom meeting with Congressman Glenn Growthman, a Fox Valley Tech Appointment Board, and a PSC, which is the Professional Standards Council, which is a DPI-related meeting. What I learned there yesterday was that there are a number of individuals at the upper levels of management or administration in the DPI who have appointments that expire when the new superintendent of public instruction takes over on July 1. So she may choose to continue some of those people, or she may choose to bring in whoever she, well, whoever she is, who is elected, may choose to make some changes there. And also attended the UW Oshkosh Sasquatch Centennial Planning Meeting. UW Oshkosh is celebrating 150 years as an institution in September of this year, and more to follow. I also want to note that today is Give Education Day, and so our Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, Education Foundation, has been raising money to benefit students and staff in our district. So if you haven't had a chance to donate, please go to the Facebook page and make your donation. I also want to thank the coaches, the student athletes of our winter and spring sports, as well as the parents. We all know this has been a challenging year, and we really appreciate the efforts of the parents, the students, the coaches, to make these seasons successful for our students. I also want to extend a thank you to all of our staff, our students, parents, and our community. As we know, our pre-K 12, excuse me, pre-K 8 students resumed five-day-a-week in-person learning on February 18th, followed by our 912 students on February 25th. And our case rates have not been as bad as some people might have predicted. And so we've been able to maintain our students full-time in our schools, with a few exceptions here and there where some individuals had to be quarantined. But I salute everybody who's worn the masks, maintained the distance, washed their hands, to make sure that we can stay in school five days a week. The people I've talked to who have children in school say it's made a big difference in terms of student attitude and demeanor, and so thank you to everybody who's helped to make this possible. And finally, I guess this is really more of an announcement, but next week is spring break in the school district. And we, as a board, I'm sure, extend best wishes for a happy, healthy, and relaxing time to everyone connected with the district, students, staff, who have worked incredibly hard this year, as well as parents for their ongoing support. So with that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report and the good news information. Dr. Gunlock?
Good evening, everyone. As part of our superintendent's good news report, the IDMS Art Program at Merrill Middle School recently completed an under-the-sea black light gallery as part of an ocean-themed art unit. Students learned about things in the ocean and began to create ocean-themed art with an added twist of using fluorescent paint and turning their work into a black light gallery. Sounds a little like the '70s. Have come back. Okay. Jefferson Elementary, third graders at Jefferson Elementary School were able to dissect and explore a real wasp nest. The impromptu unit of study was donated by a local community member who found the nest on their property and wanted to give it to the students to learn from. I think I may have one of those myself to give.
That's a great idea.
It's a good thing there's empty.
Communities One students will be sharing their learning with middle-school students in New Hampshire, Colorado, and different areas of Wisconsin. The students have been learning about Asian hate in our country, and their call to action is asking these middle-schoolers to send a letter to their House Representative regarding the Stop Asian Hate Resolution 908. Students at Shapiro STEM Academy were able to listen to books read by an Oshkosh police officer, or they were able to read to an officer if they wanted to. Each child then got to take a book home to enjoy. This program is a partnership between the school, Boys and Girls Club, Oshkosh Noon Kiwanis Club, and the Oshkosh Police Department. Its goal is to help children develop their literacy skills and get to know law enforcement in their city. Second graders at Emmeline Cook are embracing mask-wearing. After earning 25 class cougar paws for being safe, respectful, and responsible, everyone got to tie-dye a mask. Another '70s. This is all good.
I'm waiting for the lava lamp.
I think that might be next. Carl Trager Elementary School is celebrating March Madness with a tournament of books. For the past few weeks, students have been reading books about social and emotional learning and mindfulness. And that is our good news report.
Thank you very much. And then we will move on to District Administrator Supplemental Reports. Mr. Kemmer and the COVID-19 update.
Good evening, everybody. So for the most recent Winnebago County data summary that came out for the weeks of March 3rd through March 16th continues to reflect a positive trend from COVID-19 standpoint in our community. So if you recall, each week we talk about the geographical boundary case rate for our district, and for this most recent report, it was at 59.7, which continues to be the moderately high category. We've been in that category for, going on three or four weeks now, and we're getting ever so close to the moderate category, which begins at a case count of 50 or below. So like I said, we're continuing the trend in the right direction there. We also take a close look at the case rate by individual grade levels for our district. And last week, when we calculated the case rates and the burden statuses, for the K-2 grade level, we're in the very high category. For the 3-5 category, we're moderately high. 6-8, we're high. And 912, we're in the moderately high. And those have been kind of jumping around a bit from week to week. I just calculated this week's case count and burden rate for each grade level, and they're dramatically different. K-2 is actually in the low category, so they go from very high to low. 3-5 is also moderately high, so that stayed consistent. 6-8 is moderately high, and then 912 is back high. So even a few cases here or there can dramatically shift where those case rates and burden statuses fall for each grade level. So the good news, like I said, is that we're continuing to trend in the right direction for our geographical area. In terms of PPE, we continue to distribute wherever needs arise. So so far this year, we've distributed over 37,000 masks to our schools. We have plenty in inventory, over 40,000, but then we all have other PPEs such as barriers, gloves, face masks, face shields, all in stock. So like I said, when a need arises, they let us know, and we get what they need over to them right away. On the vaccine front, as you know, a couple of weeks ago, all of our staff had the opportunity to become vaccinated. We still have some staff members who reach out and either have changed their minds, or there are circumstances in the weeks prior where they're looking to get vaccinated now. So we continue to connect them with the partners that we've established. New this week, the category of individuals with certain pre-existing health conditions were eligible for the vaccine, starting on Monday. That includes individuals 16 and older, so that's new as well. So some of our students might actually be eligible to receive the vaccine. With that being said, students who are, individuals who are 16 and 17 are only eligible for the Pfizer vaccine. So if there is a student who meets eligibility criteria and is looking for a vaccine, the recommendation is that they call sites ahead of time to see whether or not they have the Pfizer vaccine, because if they don't, they won't be able to get it. They also need to be accompanied by a parent or guardian if they are eligible. So that's continuing to roll out. We also are looking ahead to when our staff will be receiving their second doses of the vaccine. As many of you know, a lot of people have reactions to the second dose of the vaccine. So we're tracking which staff members are receiving that second dose on which day at each school to try to forecast whether or not we could potentially need additional subs at our buildings. There are some buildings that are, I wouldn't say a concern, but that we're keeping a close eye on, and that we're preemptively making arrangements in the event we have staff out. Testing continues to be available at the UW Oshkosh site, and in my board report, there's a link to where you can sign up for that testing. And then finally, our district dashboard for the week of what was last March 22nd, the last time it was updated. At that time, we had eight positive cases in our district, six students and two staff members, and those individuals represented six different schools. Currently have 330 students quarantined and 30 staff members. And then our cumulative totals for the year, we've had 613 positive cases since the start of the year, and 7,602 quarantines. So that concludes my board report.
Do any board members have any questions or comments? Well, thank you, Mr. Kemmer.
Thank you.
We also have an achievement gap reduction, or AGR, written report, and we like to be open and transparent with the public and with the board, and so it's always good to have a overview or executive summary of that. So joining us today is Dr. Brown.
Yeah, thank you so much, and good evening, everyone. The achievement gap reduction is our AGR, and we have four schools that are AGR schools, and that includes Jefferson, Roosevelt, Washington, and Webster Stanley Elementary. And for those people who are out there who is going, well, what does that mean for our achievement gap reduction? Basically, it's right in the title, is that we are trying to lower, we are trying to lower that achievement gap reduction for our students and schools that have a higher percentage of free and reduced lunch, and we're doing that in the areas of math and literacy. And the way that we do that is that we have reduced class sizes of either 18 to one, meaning 18 students to one teacher, or 30 students to two teachers, and we have that happening in one of our schools this year. And then we also have our instructional coach, who also works with our teachers. So those are, those are the strategies that we implement. And then later on, in June, you'll be getting to hear from the principals and more specific strategies, what they're doing around literacy and math to help support their students.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just one quick comment, too, about each of the schools. You'll see their percentages. Just want people to know that those percentages are based on end-of-the-year goals, so no one should be, have arrived yet. So just wanted to add that as well.
Good point. We'd be happy, though, if they were already there.
That would be spectacular.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We also have some board committee reports this evening. I know we have a policy and governance report, and I know we also have a facilities report. So all right. Mrs. Olmstead, the floor is yours.
Sure. We had a policy and governance committee meeting on Monday, March 8th. The first thing we talked about was the board agenda. We were going to try to get back to our listening sessions, but when we looked at the logistics, the only space available is the superintendent's office, and that's too small of a space to have social distancing, because if we have it in here, they're in here setting up, and we couldn't get them in here. So we have decided to let the newly seated board, and we'll look at, because it's only, it's always the second board, you know, it's always one board meeting a month, so that would jump, this would be the March, so it jumps to the end of April. So the new board will revisit that, and I would suggest putting this on the policy and governance agenda for May. If not, the poll board talks about it beforehand. So you guys want to throw that out there? So no changes were made to that policy. We just wanted to make sure that we were following board policy, because we hadn't been having them. Then the second thing we talked about was Policy 9130, which is the public requests, suggestions, and complaints. We discussed the language changes to this policy for clearer direction and clarification as to how some matters were handled. We brought this policy because when we came out, we talked about the four things we were going to do as a group, this is one of them, was looking at this policy about complaints. So the following paragraph was added as number four on the first page, which I'm sure you guys have looked at, these are already over. The superintendent or his designee will determine what follow-up, if any, is made in response to any anonymous complaint. If the anonymous complaint is about the superintendent, that the board president and vice president will determine what follow-up, if any, is made. The further procedures described in the policy will not be applied to any anonymous complaints. So those were all added, and we got those off of, it was WASB. We looked around and tried to get some from Neola and WASB and other policies on how to use that language and ours. Then we also, on page 2 under E, added in the first line, the following statement was removed, or at the first level of the case of the matter of the superintendent. So within the complaint procedure, the superintendent was like embedded at the end under letter E. So we pulled it out of letter E, and we made its own bullet for superintendents. So we added guidelines for matters regarding superintendent. So we pulled it out of the middle of the complaint process and threw it under the bottom of its own paragraph, and then did it about the superintendent, and then followed the procedures of those complaints, just so that it was easier to find, and made the policy easier to read and more understandable. And then we approved the revisions and the policies we recommended bringing to the board tonight. So the rest of the policies, oh, also, the administrative guidelines will be, go and it will be changed along with the 9130 policy. And then the rest of the policies, which I'm sure you guys looked at, all of them, there's a lot, are all the normal technical corrections. Corrections to state statutes, corrections to punctuation, corrections to new names like ESOL and those. So I'm sure if you guys have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, all the policies were in there, and we'll be voting on all of these tonight. Future meetings is going to be April 12, or no, yeah, April 12 at 8:30 in the morning, like normal.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mrs. Olmstead. I believe Mr. Evans is doing the facilities and finance.
Yes, I'm filling in for the chair, Allison. And the Facilities and Finance Committee met on March 18th. The first topic of discussion was the Riff Road Sports Complex, further conversation on that. We were told that using artificial turf, which granted would cost more, on the fields will allow various sports teams to be able to practice in the spring and fall when ground conditions are unfavorable. So it's actually will get more use out of the field if it's with artificial turf. The athletic complex could be funded, and I said "complex," it's kind of complex, could be funded in the following manner. Using existing district dollar donations, a plan will be, need to be implemented, it's using existing dollars, comma, donations, comma, future bond issues, send to the voters, means sending to the voters. The vision of the F and F, which is Facilities and Finance Committee, would be that the Riff Road Sports Complex be for the community. Everyone in the community would have access to the building, and would be able to use it or rent it. We discussed how to move forward with this project, and we agreed that the next step should go to the Facilities and Advisory Committee, the FAC. I'm finally getting in on all these initials for education here. And that kind of led into our refer, update. Referendum projects are continuing on schedule. Safety upgrades, which is a referendum that was, we voted on in November, is touching most of the schools in the district, and they're going to have safety upgrades at Carl Trager, Franklin Elementary, Emmeline Cook, Lakeside, and South Park. And then we kind of got back to what Bray Architects are doing, and they did do a render of an auditorium in a new middle school, but the group felt it didn't warrant the $9 to $10 million cost. And surprisingly, that cost would only get a subpar auditorium, nothing that would be deserving of what a new school would be, should have. It was decided the next step would be for, to be presented to the workshop of the board here, and with the Riff Road project and a potential performing arts complex. That time, they would bring the charge to the FAC Committee to research both projects and move them forward accordingly. So essence, we're going to be discussing if we should just have a sports complex, or make it into a sports complex slash performing arts center, all in that, outside all that Riff Road. The last item was just reorganization of the business office with an additional 1.5 FTE, which will help with succession planning and the development of the department in comparison to other districts our size. The meeting was adjourned at 10 o'clock, and our next meeting is going to be on April 15th at 8:30 in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Are there any other committee reports, board committee reports? All right. And then moving right along here to the non-agenda-related public forum. We always read our guidelines for those. We have one individual who is going to share with us this evening, so we ask that you clearly state your name and address when you're called to the table. If you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Please limit your comments to the time allotted, which is three minutes. Please use public comments rather than a question-and-answer dialogue. State clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such cases, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Gregory Egner, it's your turn. Welcome.
Thank you. Gregory Egner, 911 Greenwood Court. I was looking over the school calendar for next year, because I noticed with spring break, as you had mentioned, about spring break coming up, and I noticed it was great because it ran right into Good Friday this year, with Easter being so early. And I also noticed next year that that's not the case, because Easter is a couple weeks later. So what I'm thinking is, what, there's going to be some parents, you know, that are not Christians, and they're going to say, you know, we don't want to, we don't feel that we should be forced to keep our kids home for religious reasons. Unfortunately, you're going to have that, and it has happened in the past. So what I would suggest in the future is to make Good Friday an option day for the parents. If you want to keep your kid home for religious reasons, well, then, that's fine. That's what you, what you may, your prerogative, that's what you want to do. If you want to send your kid, well, then, send them. You know, that, but, you know, that's just something to think about. I think it'd be a good idea to just make that day an option day, because then, you know, you won't be getting the complaining, you know, somebody's going to. And this way, I think it'd be a good idea to just say, hey, you know, you've got the option, you're the parent, you decide whether you want to send your child or not. So, okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Egner. All right. Agenda-related public forum would be the next agenda item, and no one had signed up for that this evening. So we will move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I've heard that we will be pulling 6A, 6B, and number 8. Are there any other requests? Mr. Peschel?
Actually, I'd like to rescind number 8.
Okay.
So I think that board member Olmstead did a good job reviewing parts of that, parts of this policy in her statements.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any other items that anyone wishes to pull from the consent resolution this evening? Okay, saying none. The board will consider approval of 1, minutes of February 24th, 2021, regular board meeting; 2, minutes of February 24th, 2021, executive session at regular board meeting; number 3, minutes of March 3rd, 2021, executive session at special board meeting; number 4, minutes of March 10th, 2021, regular board meeting; number 5, bills payable; number 7, Neola policy updates. A, 0132.1, selection of superintendent; B, 0132.2, administrative guidelines; C, 0144.3, conflict of interest; D, 2260.02, English language proficiency; E, 2261, Title I services; F, 2261.01, parent guardian and family engagement in Title I programs; G, 2460.03, independent educational evaluation; H, 3217, weapons; I, 3431, employee leaves; J, 4217, weapons; K, 4431, I did that one, employee leaves; L, 5330, administration of medication slash emergency care; M, 5630.01, use of seclusion and restraint with students; N, 5772, weapons; O, 6147, debt management; P, 6231, budget implementation; Q, 7217, weapons; R, 7440.01, video surveillance and electronic monitoring; S, 7530.01, district-owned personal communication; T, 8420, school safety; U, 8452, automated external defibrillators; V, 8500, food services; W, 8531, free and reduced-priced meals; X, 8660, transportation by private vehicle; Y, 8800, religious and patriotic ceremonies and observations, excuse me, observances; 8, revisions to Policy 9130, public requests, suggestions, or complaints; 9, purchase of property located at 904 Grove Street, Oshkosh. So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Selagi? Harlan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Darnar?
Aye.
Herzog?
Aye.
Olmstead?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Ayes, Kevin, resolutions carries.
Thank you very much. So we go back to Resolution 6A. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Any further comment? Mr. Peschel?
Sure. So, I asked for this to be pulled so that I could abstain, as my wife is one of the temporary appointments.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Harlan.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Olmstead.
Aye.
Peschel.
Abstained.
The Ayesha, resolution carries.
Thank you. Resolution 6B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the, approve the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
I had asked that this one be pulled. We have a list of very highly qualified and professional educators and folks representing and supporting special education, as well as food service, who are retiring together. If my math serves me correctly, they have a total of 225 years of dedicated service to the students and staff and families of our school district. So, we thank each and every one of these individuals for their, their outstanding service during their tenure in our district, and wish them all the best for a healthy, happy, and long retirement. First is Jane Burr. She is currently a speech and language pathologist at Emmeline Cook School and has been in the district since 1998. Richard Boldah, mathematics teacher, Oshkosh North High School, has served the district since 1994. Eric Clark, a social studies teacher, also at Oshkosh North High School, has served the district since 1998. Linda Colantonio, a second-grade teacher in the Shapiro STEM Academy, has served since 2004. Julie Kramer, a first-grade teacher at Webster Stanley Elementary School, and has been with our district since the year 2000. Joining her in retirement is Lori Satterstrom, also a grade-two teacher from Webster Stanley, and also has served the district for 21 years. Pamela Schmidt, an assistant cook who has been with the district since 1998. Maryson Cabbage, a fifth-grade teacher at Oakwood Elementary School, has been with the district for, since 1995. So, a career going back approximately 26 years. Deborah Timm, a speech and language pathologist at South Park Middle School, and has served, served successfully since 1998. And finally, Sheri Zwicki, an SLD teacher currently serving at Oshkosh West High School since the year 2000. Again, we wish these individuals all the best, and we will miss the wisdom that they are taking with them, and also extended them an invitation to come back and sub for us. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Evans.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Olmstead.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Harlan.
Aye.
Ayesha, resolution carries.
Thank you. Those were our individually considered resolutions. Are there requests for future agenda items? Are there any announcements? With that, then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of, one, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Section 19.85 per N1 per NC of Wisconsin statutes. A, review of superintendent search firm proposals. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Garner.
Aye.
Herzog.
Aye.
Olmstead.
Aye.
Peschel.
Aye.
Harlan.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
And the motion is carried. Thank you very much.